Thank you, Ms. King. Board, if you'll take a moment and review the agenda before you, I need a motion and a second.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Cummings, and a second by Ms. Lesman. All those in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Agenda passes. Dr. Nichols, we'll jump right into presentations.
Mr. President, members of the board, we have Mr. Shane Bagwell here with Volkerd. He is going to give us an update on the Journey Middle School project.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
It's been several months since I provided an update to you on the construction progress. So I'm happy to be here today to give you an update. I hope that some of you have had the opportunity to maybe drop by and take a sneak peek, but everything's really looking nice. It's an outstanding facility that you'll be very proud of for years to come. I did prepare a PowerPoint up on the screen. Just to start off with an overview of where we stand financially. Our 2019 CIP building program, which consists of the Midtown Elementary Project as well as the Journey Middle School Project. We're reflecting that we are currently under budget a little over eight million. So we're sitting in really good, sound shape financially. Next slide, you'll see that Midtown Elementary is complete. I'm showing that that project came in about three quarters of a million under budget on its own. Moving on to Journey, you can see the expenditures, the financial commitments that we made on that project. The line share of being under budget has to do with Midtown. We got really good competitive bids on that project. So we're showing about seven and a half million under on that right now. Just a quick update on Midtown, since we last, since I last presented to you. The final construction contract value, and that includes the mass grading package that we put out as well as the building package. That final cost approached 30 million, which that's equivalent to approximately $249 a square foot. So those are excellent price. I wish we could see prices like that today. So project closeout is complete on Midtown, and we did have our year-end inspection back in July. So moving on to Journey. Right now, we have, we've spent most of our allowances that are built in that construction contract. We're sitting on about $3,000 that's remaining to be spent. I don't know of any large ticket items out there, but I do anticipate we will be executing a change order at project closeout. Our revised contractual completion date was in September. So as you're fully aware, this project is late. So we have zero percent of the time remaining, but we do have 11% of the costs to be spent. Based upon the contractor's most recent schedule update, which was late September, they indicate the project will be substantially complete the 23rd of December. Then I just have the photographs. So as you can see, we have the arrow photographs from the north. You can see all the roofing is complete. They have to put on the coping metal. The site works progressing, and inside, they've completed all the above ceiling inspections with the state inspector. And so right now, their finishes are going in in all areas of the building. If you'll just progress through the photographs, please. So that's a view from the northwest corner. You can see the athletic field is really shaping up. It's a view from the east. View from the main entrance there with the flagpole. Another view of the main entrance. Finally, moving inside, this is a typical classroom. So you can see the finishes are going in place. We have finished paint on the walls, casework, flooring, ceiling tiles are in, lights are burning, conditioned air zone. This is one of our science laboratories. Right now, they're putting in all the casework in the science laboratories. This is the view from the top of the monumental stairs where you come in the entrance there. And you can see there's a lot of pop, a lot of color, just a lot going on there. This is once you get to the bottom of the stairs and going back towards the cafeteria. The cafeteria be on your right. You can see a gentleman back there in an orange shirt. He's actually running a machine, just sanding on that floor, grinding on that floor. They're getting ready to put in the stained concrete finish in that area. And so again, this is just another view going down that corridor or back towards the gym. So this is in the media center. So we're getting some of the casework and all installed in all these areas as well. This is a view inside the cafeteria. And again, they're preparing those floors for the stained concrete finish. This is a view from the cafeteria still. Looking into the serving area in that photograph. In the kitchen, that is the exhaust hood where the bulk of the cooking appliances will sit under that hood. This is a view in the band room. You can see some of that winger, storage cabinets being set in place. This is a view inside the competition gym, the gymnasium, which is also serves as our storm shelter. See the finished paint on the walls. We've got athletic equipment installed. We're just waiting on the athletic flooring to come now. It has to be delivered to the space, and it sits in conditions for a couple of weeks before they install it. That's a view of the corridor back on the, back where the locker room areas are outside the gym. Are there any questions on the construction?
What is the going square footage for an elementary school now?
You stole my.
So the current, you know, I don't know, I wouldn't call it a joke. But what we say now is we don't really know until we put it out for bids and receive our bids. But if I was budgeting this project today, I'd be upwards of probably about $280 a square foot, and would feel a little uncomfortable about that. Again, it's hard to tell on these projects. You just have to beat the bushes, try to get contractors interested in it, put it out for bid, and see where it lands. We bid these two projects in this program at a perfect time.
So yeah, so we came, Midtown came in a hair under 250. What do you anticipate Journey ultimately come in at?
I think it's going to be, it's going to be in the same ballpark. It may actually be a little less because I think when we established our budgets for both projects, we were using the same square foot cost, you know, for budgetary purposes. And so since, since Midtown, you know, come in at around 250, and it was under budget by about three quarters of a million dollars, you know. Journey is substantially more under budget than Midtown was. So I'm thinking the square footage cost at the end of the day on Midtown is probably going to be less. I'm sorry, on Journey, it'll probably be less than it was at Midtown.
Excellent. And one of your examples, you said we was under budget, I think you said $7 million on one project?
Yeah, the total building program, we're currently under budget eight point, almost 8.2. And so if you look at Midtown, it was three quarters of a million under, and Journey was approximately 7.5 under.
And so sometimes in those situations, you know, can that money be reallocated to stuff that's in the school?
Yes, we, this money could roll over to the future projects.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
And again, I've heard, I've heard word that we need to do another tour soon. So just let me know what's convenient for everyone, and I'll be happy to set that up. I think everybody'd be really excited to walk through it now with all the finishes going in.
All right. Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Nichols, any other presentations?
No, sir, Mr. President.
With that closing presentation, we will open up the floor for public comments. If you've signed in with Ms. King, just please be mindful of our, of everyone that's here and listening online, and just be respectful of differing opinions. And it is your opportunity to address the board now, Ms. King.
Good evening. Before I begin, I would like to thank Mr. Terrell and Dr. Nichols for meeting with me before fall break. It was nice to hear that we're both on the same page, and I really appreciate everything we went over. My name is Finn Walker, and I'm a student at Bob Jones. I'm here to tell you why I'm worried for my teachers. How can someone's personal identity be political? Are you letting LGBTQ plus teachers talk about their families at school like other teachers? Can they have wedding photos of their spouses on their desks? Will you permit them to talk about their weekend plans with their husbands and wives to students in class? Where's the line for our teachers? It's all very unclear. When you declare someone's personal life as a political at their workplace, you're making the deliberate choice to increase their chance of discrimination or harassment. Why would you do that to our teachers? From the outside, it looks like you want to appease a small but loud group of people who value empty shock politics over our teachers' and students' best interests. I want you to think that you're better than that. Because this isn't the first time administration has politicized someone's very identity and personal existence in school. In the 50s and 60s, black students and teachers were harassed, terrorized, physically hurt, and even killed just for fighting for the right to be at school. Their presence there was literally political and considered distracting. Thankfully, times have changed, and nobody has to live like that anymore. Thankfully, we are now all protected by our 14th Amendment rights. But in early September, the Alabama Board of Education voted unanimously to enact the controversial Don't Say Gay law. This law violates the Equal Protection Clause of the 14th Amendment by targeting LGBTQ plus people and threatening them differently from other people. For instance, under the text of the bill, a teacher could quite vividly discuss sexual behavior with a student as long as it's heterosexual behavior. But here at Madison City Schools, it means our teachers can't have pride flags in their high school classrooms. And our left will wonder how secure their jobs are if they accidentally mention their gay friends or make references to their own personal same-sex marriage. Having a pride flag in the classroom cannot be equated to having a political candidate flag or religious flag because queer people are an oppressed minority group and not a political or religious party. Queer students or teachers should not have to be ashamed of their identity or orientation. Telling a kid you are safe here, even if you are different, in that way has been made controversial by cynical, exploitative adults. It's not an elevation of that group over other students, it's just decency. When that flag that you are banning is explicit for nothing but acceptance, the only alternative is the opposite. And after all, this is happening because of a couple complaints by one or two persistent parents that enjoy harassing students and teachers. I know they enjoy it because I've heard the things they want to say, they say to each other at these board meetings, and I've seen the things they do in the parking lots after the meetings are over. I also want to thank our SROs for watching over us, the students appreciate you. Thank you for listening to us. I sincerely hope you do something to change this policy. Hope you have a good day.
Thank you, Finn.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Mitzi Adams. I'm an ASSE civil servant and a solar scientist. And I haven't talked to the board since 2016 or 2017, when I talked about the total solar eclipse that was happening in August 2017. Well, now I'm talking about two eclipses, two major eclipses that are coming up next year, almost one year away, one year from tomorrow, and another one, which will be a total eclipse in April of 2024. So the one next year will be an annular eclipse, which will be essentially a partial eclipse. But it means that there will be an annulus of light around the moon. So anyone who is in the path of annularity will have to use filters the entire time. The total eclipse means that you can not use filters during totality, which will be, oh gosh, I think three to four minutes, something like that, if you're in the path of totality. Here in Huntsville, we're going to experience about 90%, of the total eclipse in 2024. For either one, you're going to have to travel if you want to experience annularity or totality. But I thought it was important for our area to know about these upcoming eclipses. And I have a handout with some information on the front and the back that I will give to each of you. And I have extras if anyone in the audience is interested. And I'd also like to say that there will be a total eclipse of the moon on November 8th, around 4:00 AM. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
November 8th of this year?
Thank you.
November 8th of this year for the moon?
Thank you.
Hello, board. Thank you so much for having me here today and actually allowing for public comment. I've spoken out a lot of boards that don't, and it's ridiculous. So my name is Amanda Eberts. I'm representative of Turning Point USA. If you're not familiar, we're a very, very large nonprofit, nonpartisan organization that focuses on American values, free speech, Second Amendment, capitalism, Constitution, just really basic stuff. I'm here to aid and introduce myself and introduce our chapter at Bob Jones currently. They're working on getting their registration set up, and then we're going to have some great events planned. We're also currently working on getting one at James Clemens right now. It's going to be great. We've had great response from the students at Bob Jones, and I think it's just going to take off. We have conferences all over the country specifically for students. We offer internships, scholarships, networking opportunities, just really, really amazing stuff. Community service projects, we do things with first responders. We have connections to amazing, amazing speakers and representatives in governmental politics that'll come out and talk to students. And we also offer road registration drives, which is something that I would love to do at your schools. It's a really important organization, it's really needed right now. We respect what you guys have been doing and what you guys continue to do. We're, like I said, just traditional American values. We love the American flag, we love our guns, and we want to give students a free space to be able to talk about these things and not feel threatened or feel like they have any sort of, are being held back by their school. So thank you guys for having me here, and I hope to get you guys' support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Dr. Nichols and board members. I find myself in front of you again as a non-binary trans teacher employed by Madison City Schools, asking to address and clarify the safety concerns and plan moving forward on how to keep our LGBTQ plus students safe and our staff safe in our school system. There are many safety concerns that still have not been addressed and governing language being used to suppress our students' diversity and freedom to feel comfortable to be who they are in their schools. Dr. Nichols, you personally shared in an email exchange with me on September 28th stating, "As for your question on showing a distinguished level of diversity, I believe that the description of the distinguished level outlines our guidance educators. We certainly recognize, respect, and model the diversity of our students and community each day by engaging them in an educational program that allows for their expression and ideology." This is in regards to guideline 4A on diversity and the self-assessment that every teacher was asked to complete by the district, in which it states, "For a diversity responds to and influences the larger political, social, economic, legal, and cultural contexts in the classroom, school, and local community." In the distinguished level of this question, it states engages other instructional leaders and teachers in challenging conversation that deals with issues of diversity and to increase awareness and sensitivity across the school system. It also states that under distinguished in some of the same section facilitates the valuing of diversity, including language, gender, ability, race, cultural, socioeconomic status, sexual orientation, and other factors within the school system's community. If you are asking teachers to grade themselves on these distinguished levels of diversity, then you need to allow for this diversity to occur in your school system. At the last board meeting, I spoke on the importance of representation for LGBTQ plus students and how it contributes to their success and mental health stability. I am just asking for clarification again as to how you would like to rate, how you would like us to rate ourselves on this district-aligned self-assessment when we are being asked to do the opposite in our classrooms. You continuously repeat that student and staff safety is of the highest priority, that then you need to follow up and keep students safe in our schools and support diversity across the district. I will continue to show up and represent until our students and staff are safe and comfortable being who they are in our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you.
That will close public comments, and we will move into action items. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the consent agenda. It contains items A, Minutes 22-23, September 20th to 22; B, 22-15 bid to waste management from public services; C, a bid number 22-17 for custodial equipment repair from Banks Industries; D, a playground equipment demolition bid from Great Southern Recreation; E, field trip request from Discovery Middle School Band and Chorus; F, field trip request from James Clemens Band to attend competition in Rome, Georgia; G, a field trip request from James Clemens Dance Team to attend National Dance Competition Orlando; H, an extension agreement by and between the City Board of Education and Alabama A&amp;M University; I, updates to the 22-23 Madison City salary schedule, increasing the rates for substitutes; and J, listing of Ms. Laverne Williams, Chief Financial Officer, and Janet Gray's designated individuals and authorizers for respect to the City of Madison Board of Education Tax Reserve Fund.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols. Board, Dr. Nichols has recommended the consent agenda items that you have before you, A through J. A through J. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Lesman, and a second by Mr. Overcash. All those in favor of the consent agenda items, A through J, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Consent agenda passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend approval and agreement by and between the City of Madison and the City of Madison Board of Education for school resource officers for the 22-23 school year. This will include 11 SROs and also expenditure for them to participate in the TASRO conference for a total cost of $483,981.80.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of an agreement by and between the City of Madison and the City of Madison Board of Education for SROs. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Cummings, and a second by Ms. Lesman. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, this does add an additional SRO for this school year from previous years, and our hopes are that as we get toward the end of this school year, we also can add a couple more of those positions. We ultimately would like to be able to have a full slate of SROs, one for each elementary school where they don't have to share. So we know that that's a much better possibility now than it was a few years ago because our staffing at the police department is full, but there's a certain time period of training that has to go in before they're eligible. So we appreciate the partnership, we appreciate adding the SRO, and we look forward to adding those additional ones throughout this year and into next year.
Yes, that has been a long-term goal of this district to get an SRO in every school. And I know the city is working with us on that. It is, it is a process. These are specially trained officers that can come into the school and build these relationships with our students and our faculty. And we're excited, we're excited to, at least I'm personally, I shouldn't speak to the board, I'm excited to see this coming forward, this agreement for this year.
We are too.
We are too.
Anything else? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval agreement by and between the City of Madison, the City Board of Education for 15 school crossing guards for the 22-23 school year, a total cost of $129,810.40.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of an agreement by and between the City of Madison, the City of Madison Board of Education for 15 school crossing guards. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Overcash, and a second by Ms. Lesman. Discussion, Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of boards, this is kind of the same that we've had in previous years. So we did add and, you know, make some adjustments when we brought Midtown on, and we will have to make some adjustments next year when we bring Journey online. So again, I appreciate the partnership we have with the city to work and have these crossing guards.
Anything further, board? Nothing further, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd ask Ms. Williams to come forward at this time and present the financial and bank reconciliation statements.
Good evening, board and Dr. Nichols. I'm going to present August 2022 financial statements. We should be at 91.67% as far as our revenues, and we are currently at 91.67 or higher for all of our general fund revenues. And then we are on track to meet all of our fiscal 22 budgeted goals. We also have 38.69 operating days. And as far as total revenues for August, we are, our revenues are around 90% and our expenditures are 80%.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the August 22nd, 2022 financial, bank, and reconciliation statements as presented by Ms. Williams.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the August 2022 financial and bank reconciliation statements from Madison City Schools. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Cummings, and a second by Ms. Lesman. Any discussion? Tonight, before the board meeting at 4:00 PM, we had a finance meeting, and Ms. Williams and her staff went over these details with us and answered our questions then. And if there's nothing further, then I'll call for the vote, board. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I present for a first reading, three policies. 2.5 is an electronic meeting policy, 4.6 a complaining grievances, and 4.9 political activity policies. These are from the policy committee and are up for a first reading and will be distributed to our professional organizations and placed online for comments.
Anything from our policy committee?
Do we have to make them?
No, no, just for a first reading.
Okay. So on this one, the electronic meeting policy is basically new. These are passed down to us from the pipeline, and it basically says that we can now, if needed, someone can call in or virtually to a meeting. But if you scroll down to item B7, you still, we still have to have a quorum present in order to approve items to vote.
But the person remote can vote now, is that the change?
No, we still have to have a quorum present. So the person remote cannot vote. No member of the board may participate by electronic means and deliberations or voting on any action of the board taken pursuant to the Students First Act of 2011.
Essentially, that's saying you can vote on other things, but you can't vote on anything.
Personnel.
I think, okay, I seem corrected. You can't vote on personnel, excuse me, Woody, or Mr. Simpson. Oh, anything related to the Students First Act.
The ambiguity of the statute that they passed to authorize this. So it arguably, I think you can participate in the meeting and vote on other non-personnel-related matters, but you can't vote on the personnel-related. At least, I'm not sure how helpful that is. It's what the statute said, so.
Okay.
Okay. Nothing on personnel. Okay, thank you. And then what was the next one up?
4.6 complaints and grievances.
So if you look at number one right there where it says, "The member of the public who files a grievance must demonstrate that he or she is impacted by the alleged violation to a greater extent than the impact on the public at large." So it has to affect that particular person, not just everybody. And then if you scroll down, there's some more green on point number two. Grievances may not be used to bypass or deviate from statutorily mandated prerequisites to approval of the board action, including but not limited to the recommendations of the superintendent. So that's basically to prevent lobbying. And then the last one is political activity. Again, these are all passed down from the pipeline. On A, basically is saying we, employees may not appropriate board property or resources for use in and may not engage in activities, including but not limited to the distribution of campaign material during regular school or duty hours or at board-sponsored or sanctioned events, which is anything at the school and while on duty. So these are, and then no campaign, oh, if you go down to C. So These Are, And Then No Campaign, If You Go Down To C. That's Basically No Campaigning Here Though Unless They're Going To Address The Students Maybe Like In A Forum. And If You Look Through, We Took Out, I Think They Took Out Some Of The wording Because It Was Like Specifics And It Was Just Kind Of Cleared It Up Some.
Yeah, It Doesn't Look Like The Intent Changes Any. Just The Language Is Cleaned Up A Little Bit.
Yeah. That's It?
Excellent. Thank You, Ms. Lesman.
Thanks.
Ms. Lesman And Mr. Newberry Serve On Our Policy Committee And We Appreciate All The Work That You Do With Daphne Ja and The Other Staff Members And Bringing This To Us.
Thanks.
And That Was First Reading So That Will Be Placed On The Website And As Dr. Nichols Said, That Will Be Emailed Out To The Different Organizations And We Will Wait Any Feedback On That. So Now We Will Move Into Personnel. That Closes Our Business Actions And We'll Move Into Personnel Actions. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, Members Of The Board, I Recommend For Approval The List Of Substitutes For Madison City Schools.
Board, The Superintendent Recommends Approval The List Of Substitutes For Madison City Schools. Can These Be Taken As A Group? With The Group Being Fine, Can I Have A Motion And A Second?
No move.
Second.
A motion By Ms. Lesman And A Second By Mr. Overcash. This Is Just Going To Supplement The Existing List Of Substitutes That We Already Have In The District. Any Other Comments? I'll Call For The Vote. All Those In Favor Please Say Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? List Of Substitutes passes. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, Members Of The Board, I Recommend For Approval The Supplemental Contracts For Work Performed For Madison City Schools.
Board, The Superintendent Recommends Approval Of The Supplemental Contracts That You Have Before You For Work Performed For Madison City Schools. Can These Be Taken As A Group? With The Group Being Fine, Can I Have A Motion And A Second?
No move.
Second.
A motion By Ms. Lesman And A Second By Mr. Overcash. Any Discussion? By My Review, These Were Normal Contracts For This Time Of Year And Actually A Fairly Small Number Because We've Had Some Large Lists Go By Just Recently. I'll Call For The Vote. All Those In Favor Please Say Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, Members Of The Board, I Recommend For Approval The Contracts Listed For The Access Program.
Board, The Superintendent Recommends Approval Of The Contracts Listed For The Access Program. Can These Be Taken As A Group? With The Group Fine, Can I Have A Motion And A Second?
No move.
Second.
A motion By Mr. Overcash And A Second. I'm Going To Give That One To Mr. Cummings.
Thank You.
Discussion?
Just A Reminder To The Board, We Are A Hub, One Of The Three Hubs For The Access Program. The Other Two Hubs Are Troy University And The University Of Alabama. These Contracts Are Pass Through Money. This Is Not Our Money. Comes From The State For The Online Access Distance Learning. We Are The Regional For Fourteen Counties In North Alabama. So All Of This Money Is Paid For Through The State To Us. There's Salary And Benefits That Are Given For The Full Time Staff And Then They Pass Through The Salaries For Those Teachers That They Hire To Do The Online Teaching.
Are Those Teachers Also Just From The Fourteen Counties Or Are They From Statewide?
They Could Be Anyway. Yes, Sir.
Any Discussion, Board? Call For The Vote. All Those In Favor Please Say Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols, Personnel Actions.
Mr. President, Members Of The Board, I Recommend For Your Approval The Remainder Of The Personnel Actions As Presented To You.
Board, The Superintendent Recommends Approval Of The Personnel Actions That You Have Before You. Can These Be Taken As A Group? With The Group Fine, Can I Have A Motion And A Second?
No move.
Second.
A motion By Mr. Overcash And A Second By Mr. Cummings. Any Discussion? No Discussion. I'll Call For The Vote. All Those In Favor Please Say Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Personnel Actions Pass. Dr. Nichols, Are There Any You'd Like To Call Any Attention To Tonight?
Not Tonight, No, Sir.
All Right, This Point, Board, Our Last Personnel Action Is One For Ourselves, For The Board To Act On. It's An Employment Contract Buy And Between The City Of Madison Board Of Education And Ms. Laverne Williams To Serve As Chief School Financial Officer Of The City Of Madison Schools Effective October One, Two Thousand And Twenty Two And Ending September Thirtieth, Two Thousand And Twenty Five Unless Terminated Earlier As Provided By The Contract. I Recommend This Contract To You, Board. Can I Have A Motion And A Second?
No move.
Second.
A motion By Ms. Lesman And A Second By Mr. Cummings. Any Discussion? No Discussion. I Will Call For The Vote. All Those In Favor Please Say Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. That Ends Our Personnel Actions And Takes Us To Superintendent Comments.
Mr. President, Members Of The Board, First Of All, Let Me Thank SRO Victoria Baring For Being With Us Tonight. She Covers Columbia And Heritage And Mill Creek And We Certainly Appreciate Our SROs And All They Mean To Our School District And We Thank You, Officer, For All That You Do Not Only Inside Our Buildings But In The Community. So Thank You Very Much. Also Want To Thank The Board. Earlier In Your Actions, You Helped Us To Increase Our Substitute Pay. I'm Excited That We Have Gone From Seventy Five Dollars A Day For Certified Staff, One Hundred And Fifteen Per Day If You Hold A Teaching Certificate For A Teacher Or Ninety Dollars For Non-Certified For A Teacher. And We Also Increased The Hourly Rate For Our Non-Certified Positions And So I Certainly Appreciate That. We're Like Everyone Else In This Economy And Challenged. Dr. Ja And Ms. Williams And Ms. Gray Have Worked Hard On Looking Around At Communities And Other School Districts And Seeing Where We Were And We Felt Like We Were A Little Under What We Needed To Be To Be Competitive. So I Certainly Appreciate That. I'm Proud To Let You Know That We Received Information This Week That There Are Thirty Eight School Districts Nationwide That Would Be Recognized As A School System Of Distinction By Cognia On Our Recent Review. As You Know, Cognia Is The Accreditation Program That Allows Our Transcripts And Things To Be Accredited. They Accreditate Schools And Colleges. They Do That Nationwide And We Will Be Recognized In Two Weeks In Montgomery At Their Conference As One Of The Districts That Scored Very Highly On That. And I Want To Say Thank You To Dr. Donaldson While She's Here. She Spearheaded Our Group That Did That And So I Appreciate All The Work But A Lot Of Time And Effort Went Into It From All Of Our Department Leaders And School Folks. And So Years Ago, You Used To Have To Accredit By School And A Few Years Ago, Thank Goodness, When It Was Still Called Southern Association And Then It Changed To, What Was The Next One, Dr. Donaldson, Before? I'll Think Of It. They Changed Names About Twice. And Vance Did. They Went To A District Accreditation Which Was Great Because It Saved The Schools Money. If You Did Individual Schools, They Had Teams Come To Your School. You Had To Put Up The Teams. There Was A Fee And It's Much More Streamlined Now And Better On The Schools In That Process. So Also Wanted To Let You Know That We're Currently Sitting At Twelve Thousand Three Hundred And Ninety One Students. So That's A Good Jump From Where We Were. Think At The Beginning Of The School Year On The First Day, We Were About Eleven Thousand Eight Hundred. So You Can See That Since The First Day, We've Been Adding Students Along The Way Which Is Normal For Us. So It Will Stable Out Now Until Around Christmas And Then We'll Get Another Bump Around Christmas. So We've Exceeded Last Year's End Of The School Enrollment. So But Right Now, It's Kind Of A Manageable Number. We Didn't Really Have To Add A Lot Of New Units After The School Year Started. Our Team Did, Dr. Ja And Our Staff Did A Great Job Of Anticipating Durinda White Where That Growth Would Be And Having Those Positions In Place And So I Certainly Appreciate The Work That They Did. Also Would Like To Congratulate Our District On Being Ranked Number One By NIECH In Their Most Recent Report. All Ten Of Our Elementary Schools Were Ranked In The Top Ten At The State Of Alabama. Our Middle Schools Were In The Top Five And Our High Schools Were In The Top Ten And I'm Very Proud Of The Work That Goes In For Each Of Those To Be Recognized. Also Want To Make Note That There Was An Article, I Think, In AL.com About The Thirty Year Decline Of The ACT. The Alabama Average Is Eighteen Point Five Eight And The National Average Is Nineteen Point Eight And I'm Glad That While, I'm Not Glad While Some People Declined, I Don't Want To Say That. I'm Not Glad Anybody Declined But We Did Not. And We Went From Twenty Three Point Five To Twenty Three Point Seven Which That's, We'd Like To Go Higher. We'd Like To Do A Better Job On That But It's An Outstanding Performance By Our Students And Our Staff And I'm Proud Of Them And We Weren't Part Of That Slide. So But Alabama Is One Of Only Twelve States That Requires All Students To Take The ACT As A Requirement For Their Testing. So That's Important To Know That When You Look Around And You Compare Those Scores To Other States Statewide, You Have Thirty Eight States That It's Selective For Students If They Choose To Take The ACT Or Not. But In Alabama, All Eleventh Graders Take It. So There's A Larger Pool Of Students That Go Into That. And We Were In A Meeting This Week With State Superintendent Mackey Where They Are Talking About Moving It Back To The Fall Of The Junior Year And Then Actually Giving Another Take For Students That Want To Retake It At No Cost In The Fall Of Their Senior Year. And So The State Is Looking At Trying To Provide That And Make That An Opportunity For Students. I Also Want To Recognize One Of Our Teachers, William McElwain. He's Now Part Of The National Career Advisory Council Along With Dr. Donaldson. And He Was Placed On There Because Of His Work And Focus On Cyber Education. And So We're Very Excited About Mr. McElwain Being Part Of That. And So We're Looking Forward To He And Dr. Donaldson Representing Us On The National Task Force For Career Education. Remind The Board This Sunday From Two To Four, We Will Celebrate The Twenty Fifth Anniversary Of The Creation Of The School Board. And So Look Forward To Having Folks Back Who Were On The School Board Before. It's Open To The Public. It'll Be Here In The Board Room From Two To Four. Time For Folks To Reminisce And Ms. King And Lee And Others Have Been Working On, There's Some Old Scrapbooks And They've Pulled Out Paper Clippings And All Kinds Of Things To Remind Us Of When The District Started. You Know, We Have A Vision Of All Students Being Ready. But Back Then, The Vision On One Of Those Documents Was To Be A Leader In Locally, State And Nation. And So I Think That That Vision As Folks Looked At It Twenty Five Years Ago Was To Separate And Create A School District That Would Be Ranked In The Top Of School Districts. And I Am Proud To Say That Their Vision Was Right. I Also Think That Someone Told Me That The Vote May Have Been A Little Close Back Then. I Doubt It Would Be Today. And So I Certainly Am Glad For Those Folks Who Had The Vision To Make Those Decisions Back Then And Create The Great School District That We So Get To Enjoy Today. Finally, I Have A Certificate From Ms. Lesman Who Has Completed Both Levels Two And Level Three Of The Alabama Association of School Board Training.
From Ms. Lesman?
I Believe That's It.
That's It? Mr. Overcash, We'll Start With You. Board Comments?
Well, I Was Quite Impressed With The NIECH Report That Came Out. I Know Sometimes We Get A Little Frustrated With The Peripheral Things And Struggling With Not Always Good Solid Education But It's Just Amazed Me. I Mean, We Always Knew We Were A Good School System But To Be Ranked Number One In The State And Have Every School Ranked In The Top Ten In A City That's Ranked Number One In The State In A Metro That's Were Rated Number One In The Country, We're Truly Blessed To Live What We Do And Be Able To Raise Our Families And Educate Our Children Here. I Think That's, In Our Case, A Testament To The Administration, Staff, The Teachers And The Children. It's Just, That's Truly, I Mean, To Be, What Was It, Forty Seventh Out Of Ten Thousand Systems In The Country Is Just Mind Blowing. That's All I Have. I Was Truly Amazed That We Were That Good.
Absolutely. Thank You, Mr. Overcash. Ms. Lesman?
I Agree. Number One, And I Actually Had Written It Down To Remind Everyone, Number One In Alabama Out Of One Hundred And Thirty Eight Districts Statewide, Fifty Seventh Best In The Nation And There's Ten Thousand Five Hundred And Seventy One School Systems In The Nation And We Were Fifty Seventh Here In Alabama, Madison City Schools. So Again, Thank You, Dr. Nichols And Your Staff. You Guys Do A Phenomenal Job And We're Just, I'm Just Blessed To Be Here. I'd Also, Congratulations, Dr. Donaldson. You Know, Your Efforts On The Accreditation, That Was My First One And She Did A Fantastic Job Getting Everything Ready. It Helped With Us Getting This Cognia Award. That's Amazing. So Thank You For Your Work On That. And Then Ms. Williams, Glad That You Got To, We Renewed Your Contract. Get To Have You For Another Three Years. Ms. Williams Does An Outstanding Job. She's Very Thorough, Communicates Well With Us And Is Always Available For Questions As Well. So Thank You For Your Work And Ms. Gray. And Then I Wanted To, I Wanted To Thank Too, This Apparently Is National School Lunch Week, October Ten Through Fourteenth. So Thank You To Our Cafeteria Workers, The CNP Workers. They Do A Great Job And Don't Want Them To Go Unnoticed. And Also, I'd Like To Thank Everyone That Came Out And Made Your Public Comments. We Always Enjoy, Well, We Like To Hear Your Feedback And We Do Listen. And Then I Did Want To Remind You Mental Health Matters Workshop That Is Conducted With The PTA. The Next Workshop Is Going To Be, Save The Date For October Twenty Eighth And It Will Be On Understanding And Coping With Anxiety. Hope Everyone Had A Great Fall Break And Just Glad To Be Here. Thank You.
Thank You, Ms. Lesman. Mr. Cummings?
Well, I Just Want To Ditto Everything That Was Said Previously. I Mean, The Accomplishment Of This System Is Always Incredible And It's Just A Blessing Just To Be Here In This System. I Want To Thank Mr. Walker And Ms. Everett For Coming To Speak. I Always Love When Our Students Come And Speak And They Speak On Their Causes And Champion Their Things That They Want To Stand For And It's Always An Honor To See That. And I Just Love To See Our Students Take That Initiative And Leadership Role When They Come To Speak To The Board. I Also Want To Speak, Thank You, Ms. Adams For Coming Speaking About The Solar Eclipse. I Do Remember Some Discussion Last Time We Had This Lunar Event That We Let Some Students Out Because There Was Some Liability Or Some Conversation About Students Being In The System. You Know, I'm Not Sure If It's Something That We Need To Look At Trying To Preorder Glasses Now For That Event If It's Going To Happen To School Time. But Just Thank You For Making Us Aware Of That Date. I Know We Already Set Our Calendar But I Know That Dr. Nichols And The Leadership Will Look At That And Make The Appropriate Actions. That's It.
Thank You, Mr. Cummings. I Don't Have Much. I Just, I Enjoyed Fall Break This Week. We Had, Last Week, We Had A Great Weather. I Hope You Guys Had Some Time To Recharge And That You Also Either Had A Staycation Or Got To Go Somewhere. It Was Chamber Of Commerce Weather And The Cognia Recognition, I'd Like To Congratulate You On That Again. And In The Update, I Mean, It Never Ends, Right? Wasn't There Something In The Update About You Doing The Cognia For This Year Now? I Mean, I Think It's Smaller Sections, Right? Again, Thank You For All You Do For The District. Ms. Williams, Thank You For Agreeing To Put Up With Us For Another Three Years. We're Very Happy That We Came To Terms On That. And Again, Thank You To Our SRO, SRO Bearing. We Appreciate You Being Here And For All That You Do For Our Kids And Our Community. With That, I Don't Have Anything Else. Our Next Called Board Meeting Is October Twenty Seventh, Twenty Twenty Two At Five P.M. Here In The Board Room. And If There's Nothing Further, I'll Entertain A Motion And A Second To Adjoin.
No move.
Second.
A motion By Mr. Overcash And A Second By Ms. Lesman. All Those In Favor Of Adjoining Please Say Aye.
Aye.
Any Opposed? Any Abstain?